Can we call the Lowell Public School Committee to order, please? We'll start with the salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the states of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, visible, liberty, and justice for all. Madam Secretary, would you take the roll call, please?
Ms. Delay?
Here.
Ms. Martin?
Here.
Ms. Thompson?
Here.
Mia Chow? Ms. Chun?
Here.
Ms. Del Rossi? Ms. Doherty?
Here.
Six present, one absent.
So at this time, I need a motion to approve the regularly scheduled meeting minutes of the Lowell School Committee of December 7, 2022, and the special meeting minutes of the Lowell School Committee of December 14, 2022. Motion by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Del Rossi. Ms. Del Rossi?
Could I just take a moment of personal privilege? I would just like to speak of my decision to vote, as I did in the meeting on December 14th, the special meeting. And I want to clarify that I do stand with the staff Lowell Public Schools, but I also stand with the students in the city. In deciding in that vote, I held the fact that we just appropriated hundreds of thousands of dollars for an HR audit after one was just conducted in 2018. 2018 had great recommendations for our schools' employment, and yet none of them were implemented. I also thought if we vote to bring in an outside law firm, we're making our city a defendant in yet another lawsuit and allowing an outside firm to dig into our school system and into our city. We, as a school committee, not naive. We get emails, we get phone calls, we get texts. We know what's going on. And as the administration, you know what's going on. It's not one issue, it's several employment issues. It's not this administration, it's past administrations. But it's obviously come to a boiling point. I'm scared, honestly, for what an outside law firm will find. Poor employment practices have been highlighted in the last HR audit with limited to no corrective action. I've experienced this poor employment practice and feared my job. And I knew I gave my heart and soul to my job, and I was not liked by a principal. I was fearful to leave for my own uncle's funeral. I knew if my substitute's plans were not perfect, then it would give my administrator a reason to fire me. A teacher and any type of employee in the district who does not put their best effort into what they are hired for because they're fearful of their job, they're not doing what's best for their children because they're so fearful of their administrator. That happens all too often in this city. And it's not fear, and it's affecting our students. And it's happening at all levels. I did not speak up in this situation, but it's embedded in my story and my journey is why I left my job that I love in Lowell Public Schools to serve at the Lowell School Committee. I beg this administration to make right whatever that they can possible before an outside law firm walks into our school system. We are all human beings, we're all here to serve our students. And we don't treat our own colleagues and staff equally fair and just. We are inevitably taken away from our students, we are here to serve. So I just beg all of us to do better. Maybe if we did those exit interviews and we really listened to the input of all those people who have put years and years into Lowell Public Schools and have left over this past year and took those into consideration, and listened to those common issues, we could fix what's going on and maybe not need another HR audit or an internal investigation now. Maybe we don't need to spend all this money. But at some point, we've got to a point where now we're spending hundreds and thousands of dollars on another HR audit and an internal investigation. And that saddens me that we've got to this point. So I just really hope that we can do better all around. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. We have a motion to accept the minutes that was seconded. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion passes. Now we go to permission to enter. Does anyone have any comments or questions regarding permission to enter? In which case, I would entertain a motion to approve permission to enter by Ms. Thompson, seconded by Mr. Delay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Delay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow? Ms. Chun? Ms. Del Rossi? Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Six ayes, one absent, approved.
Now we are at the memorials. Sueng Feng, mother-in-law of Butler School teacher Kevin Freeman; Latif Thomas, nephew of Maury School teacher Susan Yuvani; John Sheehan, father of Lowell High School head custodian Michael Sheehan; and father of Sullivan School teacher Kevin Sheehan; Joyce Ann Burgess, retired Merklin and LeBlanc School administrative assistant and mother of McAuliffe School teacher Barbara Burgess. Can we all rise for a moment of silence? And now we're at motions. 6.1 by Connie Martin include on the agenda for the next Personnel Subcommittee and an update from the City Law Department on the bid process for acquiring outside counsel to conduct the previously approved internal complaint investigation. Seconded by Ms. Chun? Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much. Just following up on the special meeting of the school committee when we did move forward with asking the City Law Department to put together a bid for us to engage outside counsel to conduct this investigation. I know that there's a lot going on in the Law Office and the city Solicitor's Office, but I would like for us to be able to get an update. This meeting is scheduled for, I believe, next week. I don't know if anyone has a calendar in front of them.
January 11th.
Okay, for January 11th. So if that could please be communicated to the Law Department that we'll be looking to have them in attendance and to update us on the status of that bid. Thank you.
All those in favor, or were there any other comments? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Ayes have it. Next motion by Jacqueline Doherty and Connie Martin requests the City Law Office provide the committee with a report that cites when the mayor, the superintendent, or anyone has the authority to remove a member's motion from the school committee agenda prior to public notice and discussion of said motion. The motion has a first and second, so Ms. Martin?
Really just to, once again, trying to clarify exactly what the rules are regarding once a motion is placed on the agenda by a member of the body. In this case, it did automatically have a second already. So just finding out what the actual rules that were being referred to that allowed it to be taken off the agenda without even the opportunity for discussion. So again, I believe that this is something that I believe the Law Department is going to have to pull together for us, and we'll be looking to see the specific statutes that provide that right to the mayor in doing that and having that opportunity. Thanks.
I just want to have, madam, just want to have a comment on this motion. So this motion, I feel like it is beating on a dead horse, right? This motion, we went through it two weeks ago, right before Christmas vacation, and we even had the executive session and taking the advice from the city Solicitor. And we went to executive session and we had a vote on it already. So this motion is for what? Just for clarification? I have great respect with my colleagues. I mean, Ms. Martin, you have my great disrespect, but sometimes I just want to see what's the point of doing all of this? Are we just want to clarify? Or we just want to make something that, go back and do something about it?
Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much. And I'm not looking for a time machine. But what I would like to do, I really would like us to get a clarification on this because this is something certainly it's, you know, in the years I've served in this committee, I've never seen happen. There's, you know, six members of this committee. Any one of our motions could just be eliminated for no reason. And if there are rules to be followed, I want to follow them. So I think that's really what I'm looking for, to find out what the rules of the road are so that we can all be clear on what our rights and our responsibilities are as members of the committee. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Now we are at the reports of the superintendent, and the first report, 7.1, update on universal pre-K.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is an important initiative for the committee and has been a significant investment for the committee, this being year one of our universal pre-K launch, starting with an expansion of full-day seats for four-year-olds. Part of our strategic plan is to build on this as a first step into the future year to ultimately provide universal access across the community for every child to early learning opportunities that are meaningful for his or her family, leading up to kindergarten readiness for every child in the city of Lowell. Fortunately, we are joined tonight by our Early Learning Coordinator, Lisa Van Thiel, who will share a brief update on the first-step launch and the reason why we're undertaking this important initiative. The committee should be ready for a recommendation from me come this budget season for an expansion of our universal pre-K initiative so long as budgetary allowance. Ms. Van Thiel?
Thank you very much, Superintendent Dr. Boyd. I really appreciate the opportunity to present to the school committee on this important initiative. So my goals, is the presentation supposed to be up on that screen too, or it doesn't matter? Okay, I just, I do, I just didn't see it over there, so I just want to make sure. Okay, thank you. So my goals for the presentation are just to give you an overview of what universal preschool is, why it's important, and a little bit about the landscape for the community as a whole, and what we have been doing this school year and our thoughts about next year. So universal preschool is really a policy framework where preschool is publicly funded throughout the community through a mixed delivery system that ensures that families have choice and flexibility but equitable access. So our goal initially is to focus on serving all four-year-olds in the community that are four by September 1st. So why is preschool important? There are three long-term studies that have demonstrated evidence that preschool impacts learning outcomes through adolescence and adulthood, including performance in reading and math, fewer retentions in grades, fewer special education, higher rates of graduation, more years of education, which ultimately leads to more economic success for children and families moving forward. Additionally, the Center for the Developing Child at Harvard University has done a lot of work on brain development over the years. And as you can see from these charts, your brain is really growing rapidly the first five years of life. And if you look at the chart on the right-hand side, you can see the three to five years are really important to language and cognition, particularly executive functioning skills, which are things like contributing to waiting, self-control, multi-step directions. All of these things really help, as well as learning through letter play, letter ID, writing your name, and fini mic awareness, and those all impact learning and school readiness. So what is the landscape in Lowell for early learning? There are currently 11 center-based programs, and center-based programs consist of the public schools, Head Start, and center-based programs. So this is the licensing capacity for our programs in Lowell. 11, there are 11 of them, and we currently partner with six of those programs. I just want to take a minute to point out that the 574 represented in this chart is our four-year-olds, not our three- and four-year-olds. Our preschool enrollment trends have increased over time. So as you can see on this chart, in October, we had 593 three- and four-year-olds in Lowell Public Schools in October, and we are now at 650. And then I've given you the years. We tend to increase our enrollment through the year, and that is basically our three- and four-year-olds that are identified as having a special need and additional kids who may be moving into Lowell from other communities. Or sometimes we have a big bump in December when we start doing preschool and kindergarten registration, families will enroll in preschool. This next chart that you have in front of you, last March, we did a presentation and provided information about increasing access to full day. So I used those numbers from last March in comparing to where we are right now. And as you can see, there is an increase across the board in our pre-K enrollment for our peers that are four-year-olds and our three- and four-year-olds with special needs, both in inclusive classrooms and in sub-separate classrooms. This is our special education enrollment from last March, and looking at it now, as you can see, there's been a huge increase. And we really feel that that's partly because early intervention was closed for a while, so just to give a little bit of background. The next chart is our openings in Lowell Public Schools classrooms. So last year in March, we had 92 special education openings and 35 peer openings. This year, we have 56 right now special education openings and 50 peer openings, which is a drop. We currently have 40 preschool classrooms throughout the district, providing AM and PM programming. This is just a graph showing you our peer models that are enrolled in our AM sessions, as well as our special education inclusive classroom is defined as nine preschoolers and six students with disabilities. So I just want to put that out there. Our PM sessions, obviously throughout the school year, we're identifying more three-year-olds. So that is why I think there's a little dip in the afternoon sessions, particularly for our young three-year-olds with disabilities. We also have 14 CSA sub-separate classrooms, serving our three- and four-year-olds. And this brings us to where we are with our universal pre-K. Right this year, we have a classroom at the Bartlett that offers full day. We have three classrooms at the Cardinal, we added one this year. We have two classrooms at Community Teamwork through our MOA that we created last year to increase our access to students, one at the Greenholt and a classroom at Lowell Day Nursery, another partner for our MOA, and a full-day classroom at the Merklin. So right now, where we stand with our MOA for increasing access, particularly for our full-day seats, we added 23 new seats in our full-day classroom for peers and three new seats for students with disabilities, 50 seats at Community Teamwork, and 10 seats at Lowell Day Nursery. We are full for our peer models in Lowell Public Schools and our three seats for special needs. We're at a 52% rate with our partners currently being full. We also have the Commonwealth Preschool Partnership Initiative. And this school kind of goes hand in hand with the MOU, there's many things that are similar. But there are three big priorities for this: expanding access and affordability to quality preschool, building locally-aligned quality, and equitable access to special education and inclusion. This grant is the state's for the expansion of the preschool expansion grant, which was a federally-funded program, and the state now funds this program in Lowell, and we've been doing this since 2019. And we currently have this, and we have partnerships with the Greater YMCA and Community Teamwork for this program. So consistently across the MOA and our CPPI classrooms, the teachers in those classrooms have a bachelor's degree and are being compensated with salaries similar to LPS's full-time early childhood teachers. All of them have access to the Ages and Stages Questionnaire, which we receive through the Department of Early Educational Care. We are providing training on the PALS, which is the phonological awareness language screening, and doing that three times a year to inform our literacy instruction. We are also providing onsite kindergarten screenings using the Developmental Indicator of Assessment of Learning to all of our partner programs so that those families get it done right when the kid's at the school. And all of our partners are licensed center-based programs in good standing with the Department of Early Education and Care. Some differences across the MOA and our CPPI partners and our GLEAM partners, our classroom assessment scoring assessment scoring system, which is an observational tool, we are using outside evaluators in our Commonwealth Preschool Partnership Initiative to look at the quality of the classroom in both GLEAM and CPPI, as you remember, and thank you for approving the TNTP contract for our coaching. I appreciate, we appreciate that. We are providing that to our GLEAM and CPPI partners. A big part of what we're able to do as well through the Commonwealth Preschool Partnership Initiative is provide comprehensive services to our community partner programs. So, right now, they have access to Merrimack Valley Trauma, they can make a referral, Crossroads, which is a behavior program, our special educator, we're in the process of hiring a special education teacher and a speech and language pathologist, but they do have access to us right now, as well as doing outreach and registration for those programs. We share resources with everybody in the community, whether or not they are a CPPI partner or an MOA partner. We really want all of the center-based programs to work with us together in collaboration. So, we provide our Samores Newsletter with Professional Development to everybody, and encourage everybody to participate. We have monthly meetings of the Lowell Early Childhood Council, the first Monday of each month at the library. And, we encourage folks to reach out to the early childhood staff. We have the Coordinated Family and Community Engagement folks that help children birth to five, if they need help finding a voucher or anything like that. We also have our Early Childhood Assistant Coordinator, who helps screenings and referrals. And, people can reach out to myself or others in our program around curriculum and program needs, but we really want to be a resource to all of our center-based programs. What we have found in our work this year with our partners is that staffing, funding, and transportation tend to be the biggest barriers that all programs share and have in common. So, our next steps are really to work with community partners to overcome these barriers and fill the available seats that we have, engage families in understanding child development and home visiting programs, I'm going to let you read all the other ones on their own, and explore our options to support families, particularly around extended-day needs through partnerships with our providers. Particularly, our students with disabilities have a hard time with wraparound programs and services. So, we are really looking forward to moving this work forward, and I want to, again, thank you for giving me the opportunity to present today.
Thank you, Ms. Van Thiel. That concludes the presentations, we'll stand for questions.
Mr. Lay?
Thank you, Madam Chair. By looking at the slides earlier, for this past school year, March to December, we have a jump, a large amount of enrollment. Are we accepting anyone who qualified, that applied, or do we have limited seats? And, how do we deal with that big fluctuation in number of enrollments?
Thank you, committee member. So, our goal is to serve every child who has a desire to be enrolled in public school programming. Our biggest limitation is twofold, it's space and staffing. So, we solve the spacing challenge through partnerships with community partners. So, we have available seats, so the challenge, the barrier might be for a family, you might live across the street from a school, the seat might not be at the school across the street, but there is a seat available within the community. Then, the second, though, is that while we've partnered with organizations to have space available through our partner organizations, we also have to have staffing available. And, there's now a shortage in staffing across the country that's affecting every industry, and certainly, early learning is no different. So, we're working through the barriers with really towards a goal of having access for every child in Lowell to early learning opportunities that work for their family. This year's strategy and approach has been to increase full-time seats, because that's what we were hearing from families last year, and we're continuing to listen to families to understand. But, right now, if a family of a four-year-old is interested in early learning, there's a seat available. The question is, is that seat the seat that the family wants? Because, it'll have to be a seat in where there is space, and it might not be at the school that's across the street. So, we're working to make sure that the community is aware, working to make sure that our families are aware, and working to make sure that our families can get access. So, it's a long way around saying, yes, there are space, however, we want to make sure that our families have accurate information on what that space means.
May I follow up?
Yes.
Through you. So, again, I'm looking at slide number eight, when at March number, which is the end of last school year's number, and this December, the number jumped so much, are we, I'm just curious why we have so much big jump in just over the summer?
Ms. Van Thiel?
Well, I think there's probably several reasons. One is the birth rate changes and the cutoff dates, so one is just a number of births. But, the other thing is, I do think that people are really interested in early learning as a whole, and people see the value of bringing their children to school. I also think it helps parents to understand what they can do at home as well. So, I think preschool is an opportunity for folks to learn about child development and be introduced to Lowell Public Schools and our community partners. But, a majority of the families choose it because they want to have their children ready for kindergarten.
Ms. Thompson?
First of all, I'd like to thank Ms. Van Thiel. I've had the opportunity to work with her through some other work, so I know her dedication to this work. You know, this is really important work, because it does shift equity, and so, and as everybody knows, that's my thing, is equity. But, what I am concerned about, and Dr. Board, you just spoke to it a bit, was, is the staffing issue. You know, to be able to ensure the staffing, so that, you know, my, I guess, one fear would be to be able to start the year and not sustain it. That's obviously a real big concern. So, I'm just curious, on the HR, in the HR lens, what are the various recruitment, I guess, touchpoints that have been put in place to make this a priority in order for us to be able to really grow this, because I think it is important? And then, I guess, my other question, and I'm not sure if we're going to go over, or if this is with the assignment policy, is I noticed that it's online, that they're able to log in online, so I'm just curious how our parents or how our family's finding out about this, and what is the language access support that's put in place so that people are successful? Thank you.
Ms. Phillips?
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. So, as relates to the preschool policy, we're not asking you to take any action this week, but we did want you to see what we will be putting on for the next meeting, so that we can open our application early. It is online. A lot of our outreach is through flyers, word of mouth, the institutions that our families trust. Ms. Van Thiel and her team, our bilingual liaisons, are really making a push this year to make sure that we do get to our linguistically diverse communities, and that we also are educating the community of the importance of preschool. We will be having a preschool and kindergarten showcase. The flyers will be coming out soon, but I can announce the dates. And, we do have two dates identified, Tuesday, January 24th, and Thursday, January 26th. Both are from 5:30 to 7:30. One will be at the Lincoln Elementary School, the other at the Riley Elementary School. And, that will be an opportunity for families to come, meet and greet with the different pre-K and kindergarten programs in Lowell Public Schools, but also our partner programs. There will also be resources there for families, just the wraparound services. And, we also are planning to, you know, in partnership with the Health Department, we'll have some nurses there, because we know part of our challenge is always the immunization cards. So, you know, part of our push will be for families to bring the cards with them, so that they can hear right now what they might be missing, because with our process being online, a lot of that follow-up communication ends up being online. So, this is our opportunity for someone to carry the card, get the reading, and know what the next steps are. We also have in-person support now in the Family Resource Center with the reading of the immunizations, so again, we can have that in-person support. We're looking to open our application early, and especially do a push for any student who's in our public school pre-K program right now to enroll for kindergarten. And, as Ms. Van Thiel mentioned, once we open the application for kindergarten, there are families that do have four-year-olds that say, oh, I can still enroll now. And, we do encourage enrollment at any point for a seat that's available that a family can take, even if they enroll in February. We're happy to fill every open seat.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Ms. Del Rossi?
Could I make a motion to look this over in a policy subcommittee meeting? Would that be appropriate?
I think you're referring to the document, but if, my understanding from Ms. Phillips, we're not doing that tonight, because there's a document listed there, but we're not ready to move on that.
Okay.
So, you don't have any action on the policy, it's provided for your information? Certainly, if there's any feedback that you'd have on it, it's available to you, but it's there for your review.
If we could ask, when we get this before us for action, could we have the old policy and the numbers? In the past, we always included policy numbers, it was a way to look up policies in the policy book, I think that would be helpful. Ms. Phillips, did you have something else?
Yes, so we can definitely do that, and make sure that you have the red-line version. Your printout might be black and white. The online version shows the one line that's been added in red. So, this policy has one line that's been added, and it just indicates that the application will include our MOA partner organizations as a choice for families at the point of registration. But, otherwise, we haven't recommended any change for the preschool assignment.
If I could make a suggestion with that, rather than doing red-line, which we don't see on the hard copy, maybe italics or bold, what's new, I mean, especially if it's small pieces, I think it would be easier for, you know, to, thank you. So, I think that at this point, we don't need to take any action on this. So, I believe we're now at 7.2. Update on inclusive classroom practices.
If I could thank Ms. Van Thiel for joining us tonight, thank you for all of your good work, expanding pre-K and moving towards universal pre-K across the city is a heavy lift, a major undertaking, and of significant importance to our community, so thank you for leading that effort. Thank you, so the, thank you, Madam Chair. So, the update on inclusive practices, another informational slide deck for the committee, which will have implications for, as you saw last year's, for the current year's budget, as well as next year's budget. Coming out of COVID, as we see our enrollment increasing, we're also seeing a shift in demographics to an increase of need across our English learners, as well as our students identified for special education services. Ms. Desmond's been doing an honorable job, leading both of those offices through a period of significant increase in change across our community. So, Ms. Desmond, if you can provide the committee with an update?
Thank you. So, this is just an update on where we are with both departments, and it's a brief update, but again, it's an update that I just wanted to go through, so that when we do talk about the budget in the spring, everyone is aware of some of the needs of these departments and in our focus moving forward. So, we will start with the English Learning Department. We had a evaluation completed last spring. The evaluator documented the increase that we have spoken about previously for our identification of our L learners in the school department. In particular, the 21-22 school year alone brought 66% of all new students enrolling into Lowell Public Schools, being identified through our assessment practices as students who are English learners, which moved the overall L population of our district from approximately 26% to 29% of all learners. Currently, we are just at around 4,000 students who have been identified through our assessment system as students who are English learners. In the fall of 2022, the number was just under 4,000, we have exceeded that as of today. The number of district-level support staff that we have in the L department are two. We have an L curriculum coordinator, and we have now an L district support specialist. The number of L teachers in our district is at 97. These are teachers who are certified as English learner teachers, and they are teaching outside of the standard classroom to provide our L learners with the state documented level of English learner supports that are necessary. And, those, that support depends on where our students fall in the English language assessment, access assessment, or the model assessment when they, when students register for Lowell Public Schools. So, students who fall under a 3.0 in the assessment would receive 2.5 hours of instruction from a certified L teacher outside of the standard classroom instruction. Any student that is a 3.0 or greater, they receive 45 minutes of instruction by a certified L teacher. The report also highlighted the fact that approximately 20 years ago, before the passage of Question 2, Lowell Public Schools had a Director of Bilingual Education, several facilitators, several liaison specialists, and a clerk in the department. Over the years, due to budgetary constraints and through attrition, the department went down to one staff member, which was our L coordinator. And then, recently, last year, we were able to add back one of the district support specialist positions. Through the departmental evaluation or audit, the recommendations came back that we really needed to reinstate a director position, which would be responsible for the assessment of students, managing the grants, working on building our stakeholder support groups, and looking at how we manage some of the external supports to our students and our staff. This would be able to, this would allow us to bolster the supports that we provide, both to family stakeholders and to our schools. Also, we, one of the recommendations was to add district support specialists that could support school leadership and teachers in, by providing coaching and feedback that would allow for enhanced instruction to our students, and then also to hire additional EL teachers at the school level. Some of the inclusionary support services that we currently provide, which is different from what we have done in past years, is through Fair Student Funding Model. We have been able to provide greater weights for students identified as having L needs. This is what has allowed us to build back or build up our teaching staff at the school level to 97 L teachers. Approximately five years ago, I think we had 24 L teachers. So, this, this model has really been able to provide schools with the additional resources needed to provide the students with some of the state-required instructional supports. We will continue in our inclusionary services to provide increased access to coaching and supports for school staff and teaching through our district support specialist position. We need to continue to look at our initial testing system to reconfigure, to be able to provide optimal assessing for our students that are enrolling in our district. We need to actually engage more state We need to actually engage more stakeholders, and we need to be able to support Lowell High School with the implementation of the Seal of Biliteracy, which is what we have started this year, and we need to expand upon it. So these are some of the inclusionary services that we want, we are focusing on currently, and we need to expand on. Some of the next steps are to provide cohesive curricula for tiered instruction for Ls, continue to focus on revitalizing our stakeholder groups, in particular, our LPAC, promote the Seal of Biliteracy at Lowell High School and our middle schools, so that students are aware that they are able to receive a Seal of Biliteracy when they graduate from Lowell High School if they are fluent in more than one language. Engage stakeholders in the exploration, planning, and implementation of language programming expansion. Interview and hire two more district support specialists. We have those posted already, and they are in process in in the HR department. Interview and hire for our L curriculum coordinator, which is a current open position, and gain final approval from school committee to be able to move forward with the Director of L Services position. So those are the things that we're focusing on in the department now to continue to expand upon our services. Special education department update. These are just some basic numbers. Our special ed department has increased significantly. We are now serving 22,876 students. 2,145 of those students are in full inclusion or partial inclusion. And then these additional students are in our sub-separate program, and we've broken those down there in the three different strands that we provide. As far as our IEP compliance data, we typically report on this annually to the school committee. I'm happy to say, last June, we spent a lot of time looking at how to increase compliance supports. And last year, at the end of the year, we were at 91.3% compliance, which is significant. If you look over the last five years, that's the first time we've crossed the 90% threshold of compliance. I will point out that we were in the 70 range in 2020 and 2021. That's because of COVID. We were not able to assess students because they were not physically in school. So we really had to look in last year at how do we get back to the average compliance rates? And we actually exceeded those. So I'm very proud of the department and all the work that everyone in the special ed department put in to to get over that threshold. Some of the things that we're focusing on in the special education department is building or strengthening our educational administration teams to include our ETCs and our central office administrative staff. And what we have done is focused on some professional development that is focused on how we better support teacher assistance teams at the school level, how we provide more supports to teachers around multi-tiered systems of supports to provide customized instruction and learning for our students, how we better meet some of the professional development needs, and how we work to implement some of the new Department of Education, Department of Education, Elementary and Secondary Education committees and mandates. One of the things that is happening currently is the state is rolling out an IEP improvement project for all students who've been identified as having individual education plans. And within that rollout, they have created a new IEP form, which all districts are going to have to implement this spring. And so we are working with the Department of Ed to do that. Part of the new IEP improvement project is focused on stakeholder voice. And so we're doing a lot of professional development with our teams, our school-based teams, so that they will be able to implement this new project, this new IEP improvement project this spring. We will be providing professional development to staff and sort of changing how we implement our team meetings at the at the school level. Part of this work is we have engaged in professional development for all of our educational team chairs. And part of this professional development is focusing on high-leverage practices. There's 22 research-based practices, and we're focusing on the four that are listed here: collaboration, assessments, social, emotional, and behavioral supports, and instructional And through high-level practices, we hope to be able to improve some of the evidence-based practices and research-based practices at the school level, which would result in more multi-tiered systems of intervention for our students in need. And I'm just quickly going to go over the high-level practice, the high-leverage practices that we are looking at with our ETCs and how the professional development, what the professional development is focused on with our ETCs. So one of the high-level, high-leverage practices is collaboration. And what they, what is, what the focus is on the professional development is how to implement all of the items that you see on the stickies here. So we're looking at how we partner better with parents, how we support wraparound services, how we work to be really student-centered and focused when we are talking and developing IEPs as a team, and how we're looking at modeling and providing professional development to teachers, and how we how we implement co-teaching models at the building level. Another high-leverage practice is the assessment practices. And so if you look at the different stickies here, these are the highlights that are focused on when, within the professional development that is being provided to our educational team chairs. Social, emotional, and behavioral practices are looking at student engagement, safe and consistent learning environments, goals for functional behavior assessments, and how we're implementing some of the data that we're collecting through some of the assessments into how we're providing better supports to our students who have individual education plans. And finally, the high-leverage instructional practices. How we're universally designing lessons to meet the needs of all learners, how we're scaffolding supports, how we're creating high-level engaging lessons, explicit instruction, and flexible grouping to support the need of our students. So again, all of these high-leverage practices are being focused on in the professional development that our educational team chairs are receiving, so that when they are leading meetings around individual education plans, they're able to speak to these areas and offer suggestions to the team when they're writing the plans for our students. And that completes the overview of the focuses currently in both departments, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson.
I have a series of questions, so I'll try to go through them quickly. The first one is, have any of these new positions, the ones that were on page four, have they been proposed as options through HR as career ladder opportunities? And I say that because one of the things you mentioned is that they stated through the assessment that there's a need for a director. And I'm just curious as to, has there been something built through the HR process currently where people that are internal, that have, you know, the skill set, have been kind of prepared to move forward in some capacity? And I'm not sure who can speak to that. I don't know if that's you or Dr. Boyd.
Ms. Desmond.
So the positions that we offer through the HR department are posted on School Spring and School Stream for all of our staff. We also have EL lead teachers at the building level, EL certified teachers at the building level, who all have access to those postings and have the opportunity to apply.
So, and that's that's good, but this is a little bit different, and probably I'm coming at it from my HR background. When you create a career ladder, there's basically things put in place for people to move forward in a very kind of direct manner. So they have like, you know, it's not like any random person goes and applies for the job. It's, we have these, once you've hit these marks, then you'd be, you know, a good person for that type of a thing. And a lot of companies don't have that process anymore. So I was curious if internally, that's something we've looked at through our HR, because I think that would be a really good suggestion for some of these types of roles. So that was the first thing. For Dr. Boyd, if you can answer that now or bring it back.
Yeah, there's, we're actually looking at that within our teacher ranks right now, right now, but it's not something that we have developed for certain all administrative roles within the organization.
Okay, thank you. And then my my next question, because of this director role, how, when's the last time we actually had a bilingual director in the district?
I'd have to go back and look at the documentation. It's been quite a few years at this point.
So what have we, and this is a me question, being new. What have we been doing to, because that's a huge need. Obviously, we just spoke about the number of EL, the percentage that moved up, and even before that, it was a huge, a huge issue. So I'm just curious how we've been managing without, like, a key cog in the wheel to be, is what it looks like for me. And I'm not sure.
Yeah, it's, it's been a challenge to say the least. So what you had, unfortunately, what we've had historically here in Lowell Public Schools have been some significant budget constraints, but then we moved into the high volatility of COVID. So the committee did approve those positions within this past year's budget, so they are approved within the budget. The next step is aligning it with the PACE schedule, which has been before the committee. That'll be the next one that comes before the committee. So that position is within the current year's budget.
Okay. And I just have two more questions, Ms. Desmond. One of the things that I noted, and this is, this is something that we use a lot, the term stakeholders. I just want to be really clear what that means. And I was glad on page 14, when parents as partners was considered a stakeholder, because as we were going through this, it didn't sound like parents were really added into that that term. So I was glad to see at the end that that really is something that is being brought to the table. So to that point, on page 10, when we talk about the IEP improvement project, I'm curious, what has been done to bring those particular stakeholders into the knowledge that their children that are currently on IEPs are going to have a mandated change in their IEP? Are they aware that this is going to be happening? What do they need to do, if anything?
Yes. So this, this IEP improvement project is a state-level Department of Elementary and Secondary Education improvement project. And so they've really worked hard to engage our stakeholders. And to me, our number one stakeholder are our families, as, you know, being a teacher for a long time and a building-level principal. So when I say stakeholders, I do include parents. So if that's not clear, I just want to be clear that that is, that those are our number one stakeholders. But the more information that we receive from the Department of Ed, I will provide the committee with an update, because it is something that's sort of being rolled out throughout the spring, and it will affect our department significantly. We have tried to get ahead of it by professionally developing our educational team chairs on the high-level, high-leverage practices, because there is a significant component around engaging stakeholders and community collaboration. And so that's why we wanted to get ahead of it and provide that specific professional development. So I do think that we are well-positioned to be able to implement the Department of Ed's new IEP program. But again, you know, it's, it's, we haven't received a tremendous amount of information as of today on sort of the rollout ahead of us.
Appreciate that. I think that, you know, knowing that the parents are going to be brought in as soon as possible so that, because there's a high level of anxiety when you already have a child that's on an IEP, or you have multiple children that are on different IEPs, and trying to make sure that you're doing the right thing to support your your children as well. So thank you for that. That's it for me.
Ms. Del Rossi.
Thank you for the presentation. I, I just had a question in the part of where the ETCs, the evaluation team chairs, are going to the training for the high-leverage instruction practices. Would it be practical to also send special ed teachers as well?
Ms. Desmond.
So the idea is for the team chairs to be able to bring the information back to the teams and professionally develop or support the professional development of the building-based teams. As we continue to do this work with the IEP project, I think we'll be able to better assess what the needs are of the individual teachers and how we can provide them with better professional development and more supports. So that's sort of the next phase after we start to roll out what the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed are asking us to roll out.
So it's in pieces of the phase? Okay. And this is just kind of a thought that I had to kind of separate out the Special Education Subcommittee. I wanted to really put some attention on to that, because I know special ed is just a subcommittee on its own. And I'd really like to pay some attention, and I know it's into the Curriculum and Instruction Subcommittee, but I wanted to see if I could put a motion forth to make that Special Education Subcommittee outside of the Curriculum and Instruction Committee, so that we can really pay attention to what's going on, especially with the new IEP stuff going on with the Department of Education. And just reading, you know, there's 5,000 students on an IEP, basically, in Lowell Public Schools, and all the different subsettings of the classrooms, you know, just to really keep an idea of what's going on with the special education aspect, if that would be possible. Could I make a motion to do that?
If I could suggest, we used to have special education as a separate subcommittee. I definitely hear where you're coming from, but where the mayor's not here tonight, and historically, we've given the mayor that role of, and I think it it brings to light the fact that we still have a number of subcommittees that are minus members since Mr. Coto left in March. Those positions have not been filled. So I think it would be better to put it on as a formal motion when the mayor is here. But I definitely agree with you. It is a big issue and perhaps should be separated out. But I don't, I mean, if you wanted to make it tonight, I'm, I'm open to what the body thinks. Ms. Martin.
Yeah, I mean, I would agree. I mean, I think it, I think we could certainly take an action tonight as a committee based on on the recommendation. I do think it makes good sense to recreate the the special ed subcommittee, and from curriculum, you're more than welcome to it. So it'd be great to carve that off and give it some special attention. But I do think perhaps we make a motion requesting that the mayor reinstate the subcommittee.
Then we have a motion by Ms. Del Rossi, seconded by Ms. Martin, that the mayor reinstate a special education subcommittee as a separate entity of its own. And can we add that we also get those other subcommittee assignments, you know, in the request to the mayor? Would you be comfortable with that, Ms. Maker of the motion? Okay? So if we could add that we would request the mayor consider sep, we're asking to separate special education and look at assignments for that subcommittee as well as the other subcommittees that are lacking members. And I see Ms. Chune had her hand up. Did you want to say anything?
No, I just wanted, yes, we need to fill in some empty slots with the subcommittees. Oh, sorry.
I just wanted to emphasize on, yes, there are some subcommittees that need to be assigned, and I myself have requests for that. And so I'd like to put myself out there to get the assignment. Thank you.
Ms. Thompson, did you also have your hand up? Okay. So all in favor of the motion, say aye. None opposed, motion passes. Mr. Lay, did you have your hand up, sir?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. By looking at the, again, go back to number, page number four, number of English learner in fall 2022 is about 4,000, um, 4,000, less than 4,000, 3,900 students. And how do we classify an English learner? I think we might have done it before in the past, but this number looks a little bit high. And and the the number of EL teachers, only 97. So it turned out to be about 41 students per one teacher as in EL class. So how do we identify someone? So how do we identify someone who is EL?
Dr. Boyd?
Sure. So there's a, an assessment that students take when they enroll in little public schools as well as during their continuous education in little public schools. So move through levels of English language acquisition. Those levels will determine the level of support they will receive from a certified EL teacher. So it's not divided up where they're in an English language class with an L teacher all the time. They're there if they're at the beginning stages of English language development. But students might be an English learner, but at later stages of English language development. And they might be in the classroom with the general education teacher during their language development. And they're not with the EL teacher all of the time. So the EL teacher might be teaching them for their literacy programming, for instance, if they're at the beginning stages. The English, the EL teacher might be inside the classroom with the general ed teacher at different times for different levels of development. Ms. Desmond, do you want to add anything to that? Is there any clarification you can provide from Mr. Lay?
Like, is this high school from K, from K to high school or?
Right, so these, this number represents all of the L identified learners from kindergarten through grade 12. There is, when you register as a student of little, little public schools, there's a parent survey that needs to be completed. That would indicate to us whether or not the, the student would qualify for an L assessment. It's the model assessment. Once that assessment is given to a student that qualifies to be assessed, we then are able to get a number that represents where the student is on the continuum of being an English learner. And that information is then provided to the school. And that would help the school understand how to educate the student. Some of our students are L students who enroll in little public schools, but they're high functioning L students. So they, they only require 45 minutes of instruction a day by a certified L teacher. Some of our students are on the lower level of the continuum when they're assessed. And they need significantly more support when, when they are being educated in our schools. So there's a continuum. There's a range of where our students fall on the assessment and what needs they, they require. Then annually, if you've been identified as an English learner, you are then taking something called the access assessment every January. And that assessment looks to see how you are growing as a student and what additional supports you need throughout the school year.
So when, when you pass that access, when you, when you go beyond that threshold point, you're no longer an EL student, is that right?
So depending on your access score, you're, you're assessed every year. And the L, the L's lead teacher in the building looks at those results and determines whether or not you continue on receiving those L services or if you have, it's called FLEP, if you've FLEPPed out of that. And, and when you FLEPPed out, you're, you're continued to be monitored, but you don't necessarily need those services any longer.
So you're no longer EL student or, or you, it's not like once you are an EL student, you are EL for life? No, okay, thank you.
Okay, we are all set with that report. Thank you very much, Ms. Desmond.
Thank you.
The next item is 7.3 Budget Update. Dr. Boyd?
Thank you. And I believe this, the, the last long report for the committee. As a reminder, it's, you had two agendas condensed into one. So I appreciate the committee's patience moving through this. This is obviously an update that is of high interest to the committee. We're going into the second half of the FY '23 budget. And we're going to start to move into the FY '24 budget. We're eagerly awaiting the governor's budget proposal, which typically comes towards the end of this month. If it comes ahead of the next committee meeting, we might have that for you in January. Typically, we'll have that for you at the beginning of the February meeting. Ms. Turner is prepared to give you an update on both the FY '23 and FY '24 budgeting process as well as where you stand in our mid-year reconciliation in terms of line item surpluses as well as negatives so that we can start to go through the process of final budget balancing going into the second half of the year. Ms. Turner?
So the agenda tonight includes the FY '23 budget update in which we went over the budget to actuals with the forecasted flexibility of funds, the ESA updates, the priorities that we have for leveraging the forecasted savings, and then the FY '24 budget introduction, which will include the tentative budget calendar and the governor's budget timeline. This first slide is just showing you a visual of what happens. We do the budget, we review constantly, and then we reallocate dollars by finding any of the savings throughout the budget line items. And then we throw it back into a pool that ends up getting, you know, reconsidered and reallocated. Per the year-to-date budget memo that we do weekly, we review all of the line items and decide whether they are shortages or savings. We did redo the year-to-date budget report so that it would be more user-friendly for you. Instead of it being done by the DESI function code, we're doing it by category. So you'll see all salaries. And then you would see at the bottom of that, that despite some negatives in certain accounts from budgeting at average staff salary, that the overall salaries have been spent about 35%, which is meaning that we're doing fine with salaries. As a matter of fact, we're anticipating a $4.5 million savings in salaries already. And that is partially because of things like tutors. We had put about $2 million on the local budget for tutors due to the increased request from the schools. But then when our grants came through and we did get increases to the allocations, we were able to put more of that money, more of the cost onto the grants, which frees up the local budget dollars. There are also unfilled positions, even if they're now filled. Say this, the Director of the Parent Academy or the CLSP Coordinator or one-to-one Paris. We budget one-to-one Paris expecting a certain amount. If we end up not needing those, of course, that frees up the money. So we are looking at approximately $4.5 million in known vacancy savings right now. And as you may remember, we did have a $2.5 million set aside that we called the Fall Reconciliation. So that when we, those anticipated student influx, L students increased in the fall, if we needed to, we could adjust accordingly and give more teachers to those schools that did get more than we anticipated. So we're, we still have a remaining balance in that line of 1.5 million. If you can recall, we have used some of those funds for things like the early college promise, the after-doc program at the VoC, the doubling of the lease cost for central office and for the 80-day school. So all of those type of costs that we did not anticipate did come out of that line. But again, still $1.5 million at this point in the year that still has not been spent. So what we do when we identify those type of things through our weekly analysis of the year-to-date budget report, by this point, now we have to sit here, we can't just assume, oh, it's the fall, we have plenty of time. Now we have to actively come to you and start saying, let's throw that all in the pool. Now we have to reallocate and pivot the plan, right? So you approved that budget, but now it's time to pivot it. So the priorities for pivoting or leveraging the savings that we did identify, which by the way, I have to say, what I have identified are the costs, I mean, the savings that I feel very confident with. There still could be substantially more with, you know, like purchase orders that come in less than, an invoice coming in less than the purchase order, things like that. But here are the priorities that we have for leveraging the savings. We'll do fund management. One example of that that I'll get, I'm going to get to later in the slideshow, but is if we know that we have additional savings in the general fund, we'll buy something that we planned on using ESAR dollars, or being that we have the additional year with ESAR, for like library books. So fund management is all about just first to expire will be the first to spend. We're also looking at making sure that we do strategic investments in the FY '24 priorities, which is the library books or additional system-wide supplies like we've done for the last couple of years. Pre-purchase and the system-wide supplies using current year money frees it up in the following year's budget. We'll maximize the sped stabilization account. We'll maximize amounts in the revolving accounts. And we'll accelerate critical facility investments such as HVAC and playgrounds. These slides, I put more in it so that you can read. But more or less, it's just talking about what I just said, how we strategically analyze all of the funding sources to make sure that we don't leave any dollars on the table. We don't want money going back to the city, and we're residents here too. We don't want it to go back, we want it for the students. And we don't want it to go back as unspent grant funds. So we're constantly reviewing it and delaying cost movement to the grants so that we can fully expend local budget dollars and carry forward grants. The next slide is one that you've seen many times. And it's just our way to remind you that we are constantly doing this review of the multiple funding sources so that we address fiscal cliffs in advance. With, as I just said, if we identified extra money right now, we're sitting here saying, okay, let's move those library books over. And when we identify additional fund initiatives or programs, we're not doing something that cannot be sustained. We're trying to invest in one-time, cost-only. The next slide, again, I will not go through this and read this, but it's just trying to remind you guys that the strategic investment like library books and system-wide supplies would be considered when, that's what we're bringing forward to you now to use the savings to cover those type of costs. And then I did put a blurb in there for maximizing sped stabilization. On the bottom of this sheet, you would see that based upon what I've shared with you in the past, we're allowed to do 2% of net school spending. So that was what was researched for me by one of my staff members. But as I put here, as, you know, I put some excerpts here. I now think there may be an interpretation issue that I'm trying to confirm with the city CFO. Based upon this, saying for regions, the amount to be appropriated to the stabilization, stabilization fund would be 2%. But then it goes on to say, other area districts may choose to consider when establishing the fund, a maximum balance in the fund. So what that implies to me is that the 2% of net school spending cap is really for like the regional school districts. And that we as a city school district could decide with the city how much the sped stabilization is capped at. So as if that, if I'm correct in that, and I did reach out to DESI and the city CFO, I've emailed both. If I'm correct, that means we have an unlimited balance, unlimited amount that we can add to the sped stabilization right now. Which is good news in one way because we don't have, you know, a limit to it. But, and that allows us to build it enough that in future years when we don't have plenty of money, that we're still able to use these funds to help with out-of-district cost and all the rising tuition rates. But if we do go according to the 2% net school spending cap that I, we originally thought we had to abide by, we still have $2.2 million. So again, these type of things are all being considered when we see that we have extra funding so that we have a plan for the extra money and don't leave it on the table. The next slide, I see now that it's very difficult for you to see on the screen. And I did, I do, I did take it as far as trying to make sure that we use multiple sheets if necessary. But this is just trying to show you the actual balances in the revolving accounts and showing you how we've gone from the negative 19% from a couple of years ago. Now we're up to 5.62%. Now, as I've said before, there's an op, we have an opposite problem. We're not negative anymore, but we have some salins that could be exceeded. We're not allowed to just carry an, you know, a significant amount. There's, there's caps. So the food service, we already exceeded the three, the three times the operating expense amount that we're capped at, which is 2.4. I think we have like 5 million, 4, 4.7 million in the account. But I have been in constant contact with DESI in asking for permission to do equipment investments, marketing plan investments where they start to mark, re, reimage the food service program. And we also did reduce the amount that we're maintaining as a surplus in that food service account by increasing the quality and the offering that we have. And that was based upon the school committee's request. So in other words, in past years, you've seen that the vendor has promised us a $1 million return after cost and revenue are all netted out. Now we, I think we, we promised 200,000 because we know we have significant savings and we can now spend more and worry less. And then the other one on here that's to be noted is, for me to note on, is the circuit breakup. I made the mistake a couple of years ago, thinking that if I left more, something higher than the sale in, in the account, that, oh, great, well, what are they going to do? They're not going to take it. Well, yeah, they did, the city did. So when that happened, it went into the city's cash. It was $200,000. But now what I do is I constantly monitor how healthy this account is. And if there's significant money in this account, I know now to spend more of it. I don't just leave it there now. I know it goes both ways. It's like a ping pong game. The next slide is just going into more details about priority, the priorities for leveraging savings. As we said, we're going to do the fund management, making sure we spend the first to expire funds. We're going to invest in the investments like library books and system-wide supplies. We're going to do that using current year dollars. We're going to maximize the sped stabilization to offset that future rising out-of-district cost. We're going to maximize amounts in revolving accounts when we're able to. And we're also going to accelerate the critical facility investments. But currently, I project the following savings. I can predict at this time, a solid $6 million. And when I prepared this presentation, we had said that we could use that $2 million for investments in library books and supplies, which would free up the ESAR dollars. So then we would have more in that following, year three ESAR to move to facilities. So it's all like playing chess. And then we also had originally suggested 2.1 million could go into the sped stabilization if we were using that regional max. Then the remained in, I mean, remaining 1.9 could be invested in facilities by moving instructional-type costs from ESAR onto the local budget to spend down the local budget, freeing up the ESAR that can go into facilities. But now, after we prepared this report, we all came up with approximately $2 million that we wanted to bring to your attention for Acceleration Academies. I believe that's the name, right? Acceleration Academies. We've projected that to be approximately $2 million. We've done different scenarios, saying that if we have maximum participation at each school, it would cost approximately $2 million for staffing, which would include teachers, 10 teachers per school. It would be a site admin, that's not included in this packet because it's something that came up after. But I'm bringing it, like introducing it tonight because it is part of this topic. But with that 2 point, that $2 million for Acceleration Academies would include an approximate 10 teachers per school, a site administrator, a nurse, supplies, transportation. The reason why that is just a tentative number, the $2 million for the two acceleration weeks, the February and April weeks, is because we don't know if we're going to have enough staffing to cover that. So if we only get five teachers at one school, that may limit the number of students that are able to participate. So please note that we're, I'm listing $2 million as that's if we have maximum participation. And there are different options of how everything will play out with the cost of transportation, whether there's available drivers, all of that. So we'll bring that forward again as we find concrete answers to all of the questions that we need before we can move forward. But again, $6 million, as you can see, if I have $6 million in savings, if we do $2 million for the Acceleration Academies, $2 million for library books and supplies, now we're down to only $2 million left. And we could fund the sped stabilization or use it for facilities to help with all of the overdue products. The next slide is just a budget calendar draft. And it's showing, I will not read it as, again, I'm trying not to drive you guys crazy. But as you can see here, we did already start the process of preparing enrollment projections that are shared with the principals. We, these Liam Skinner and Robin Desmond has, they've been meeting to go guardrails to improve the guardrails that we offer to the schools. And then we've shared the budget process with the principals. And the rest are all of the typical things that you see. We've mapped it out based upon the school committee dates so that you start to follow a uniform schedule of what you'll see at every one of the meetings. And then finally, the last slideshow, and I think I've done this quickly. But the, and you, I'm not trying to rush through the data. I just know that it's a lot of information. But this last slideshow- But this last slideshow, when I had said to you at the last meeting that I could try to project out what the governor's numbers would be, if I took, we've had, this is the second year of the Student Opportunity Act. The first year got delayed. So if I take an average between the two years and take out the increase that's simply because of an enrollment increase, if I take just the amount that we got for the extra dollars we're getting for special ed, ELL, low-income homeless students, when I take out and just use those, I can predict that we'd have about $21 million. And we've been reviewing the budget to look at all of the things that are going to dry up on ESR and what we have to use these funds to cover in order to not hit that huge fiscal cliff. But again, these are estimates and projections. I'm not certain of these. This is just based upon the two years of data that I have and the promise that we're going to have five more years of increases that are supposed to be 1/7 of a budget. And I do believe that was the last slide. So if you have any questions or want me to go over anything in more detail, I'm--
Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much. Thank you. Just a couple of quick questions. So I guess starting from the back to front, you know, as we're looking at that $21 million, I think we're all familiar with what happens when we get our first budget report and we're told that we have, I'm going to estimate, $22 million in salary increases and insurance increases. And so just, you know, as we talk about $21 million, that gets eaten up very quickly with nondiscretionary items that we need to spend it on. So that was one. The other question I had had is we're looking at kind of opportunities for some of this funding that we know is, you know, going to be working its way out in the next, not this year, but next year. Some of the things we've talked about regarding MUNIS system, regarding payroll systems, regarding account, all those kind of, you know, even HR systems. It could be a really good time to make those kinds of investments and be able to not only spend these dollars to buy the package, the product, but be able to bring in the expertise for a year to set it up, to train, to really, you know, if we're going to make, I think, significant moves in technology in terms of our administration. I mean, we've made big investments in student technology and teacher technology. It seems like now would be a pretty auspicious time to spend some of these dollars on administration technology. And those are, again, things that we can spend money on now that are those kind of, for the most part, one-time, big expenses that we can kind of maintain over time.
I'm glad you said that. It actually helps me with a reminder. One thing, you have already approved at one of the recent school committee meetings for us to work with the city on getting that additional application specialist where they'll work with the city and they'll have all the passwords and codes to the city database, city technology, but they're going to concentrate strictly on our projects, right? So a lot of the work in the city is special to only us, right? We're the ones that have the teachers, that have 42, 44, or lump sums, all of that type of stuff. So we did give them the go-ahead, but then the holidays hit, so I'm sure that that's going to happen soon. So we will end up in current costs for that. In addition, we were supposed to draft a position control, or we weren't sure of the title, but another position that we were going to ask to assist us with exactly what you're talking about, modernizing, automating, and building a bridge between HR and finance. I think I've used this example several times, that with automation and modernization comes their own, I mean, comes a unique set of problems. We used to have paper pay stubs. So when they would get sent to the school, the principal would be able to see that Joe Schmo was getting paid and he's not even there anymore. But because everything's electronic now, he no longer sees that, right? So we don't have the people in place. We didn't need the people back then for that type of thing because the principal would notice the paper. But now, we have no one that does the tie between finance and the HR department. For instance, I take the actual payroll and I download it, and then I compare it to a summary of all of the FTEs that you approved in the budget in local and grants. And then I go through the 3,800 people on this payroll. I count, I try to sort code them, cut and paste to all these different tabs. So old-fashioned, and it takes me a day or two to do that. And if I do that weekly, when I say it's a mess, it's a mess, but it's old-fashioned, archaic. And if you had a person, like who we were going, we were going to bring forward a suggested job description to you and call it an internal control, payroll internal control specialist or position control, we didn't know. But again, like you said, it could be a temporary position that helps us get the systems in place. And then when the money does go away with the grants, if there's no longer a need, then we consider that at the time. But we are trying to do those things, and we do think the city is going to be able to move. We have the right people in place right now between the new auditor, the new payroll people, and to the fact that we're going to use that application specialist to do exactly what you said.
I think that's great. And I mean, I do think that these are kind of, you know, timely and also very time-consuming. So I mean, I appreciate that you're already working that angle. My only other comment would be, and this is something I think that as we get into the new year, we can discuss, you know, the investments in HVAC playgrounds. You know, I do want us to be able to coordinate with the city, to be able to make those kind of joint investments. I know that we've come back and forth on kind of ongoing facility subcommittee meetings. I can't say if that's effective or if we feel it could be effective, but I do think that in the new year, we need to kind of redouble our efforts to ensure that we're working in concert. And again, a lot of these are going to be one-time, you know, we're not going to have a chance like this again between this year and next, so we really need to make the most of those investments and get the biggest bang that we possibly can for them. Thank you.
Ms. Thompson?
I echo what Ms. Martin said about us having this one-time ability to impact these changes. I know for years, there's been an ongoing, the city pays for this, the school committee pays for this rhetoric. I think it would be a shame on us if we have this one-time money and something doesn't actually change. So I think that it's really imperative that we do indeed work with our colleagues on the other side of the aisle, if you will, to make sure that we get this done. I was also wondering if we have considered, or if we're at the highest level of efficiency with technology for students with autism specifically. And I say that because there are really advanced systems. I know that I had made a, and this is a long time ago, I made a motion about signage for, in playgrounds for students with, that need things that are more visual as opposed to like, or they could be needing things for sound because they don't have vision or have limited vision. So making those types of concessions and not letting, again, this one-time money is kind of a waste. Thank you.
Mr. Lay?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So through you, Ms. Turner, you mentioned about accelerating academy. What is that? Is that helping students or helping advance courses or something?
Sure. And it starts to connect in with all of our work around learning recovery through COVID. So you'll see in your packet, which is a report, just hopefully the committee is just ready to accept the report on the next one, that shares with you that we're making progress. But we still got a long way to go in order to recover the learning loss and learning opportunities that were missed during the heights of the pandemic. Within our school calendar, we have vacation weeks in both February and April. Students can get access to additional learning, which we call acceleration academies across the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. However, it's not compulsory learning. It's opportunities for students who need enrichment, remediation, or additional learning during that downtime, that families want that opportunity. That's during the vacation weeks of February and April, so it's also not part of the compulsory work calendar for staff, which is why you heard from Ms. Turner to forecast the staffing costs is not as simple as just using a formula. It's actually a matter of making sure we post those jobs, assess the amount of staff that we have available, so then we can offer out the opportunities to students that are real opportunities rather than just wishless items. So the cost there for both weeks, as estimated by Ms. Turner based on current data, is approximately $2 million. That would be our highest priority use. The reason you haven't seen that before is sometimes there's opportunities for additional grant dollars from the state. Ms. Desmond's office has been highly successful at gathering every grant dollar available for these acceleration academies previously and historically. We expect that some of those grant dollars may again come available. If so, Ms. Desmond's office will take the lead on applying for those, and we're confident, again, they'll be allocated, but they're not guaranteed. So that's how it starts to come to an unknown budget variable, but we're confident that you have that flexibility, and we're also confident based on the data we're seeing that it's a high priority for our young people. So we'll be bringing back more specifics on the next January meeting on this.
So for me, when I hear that we may have some money at the end of the school year, it is a pleasant thing to hear because I could think of a few things that we may help the average student to get, become good student, and good student become excellent students. You know, summer school programs, I don't know, we have put any thought into that. After-schools, activities, clubs. I'm sure that clubs in the high school or somewhere else, middle school, they need some money. So if we could fund them some of the money, that would be excellent. So just a few thoughts I want to throw at them.
So thank you, committee member. That's been a significant investment already as part of your three-year ESR plan. So we've significantly invested in expansion of after-school and summer school programming. The constraint you have there as a committee is not around dollars invested. The committee's identified that as the highest priority around our ESR accelerated learning plan. So those dollars are invested. The challenge is transportation availability. So bus driver shortages have significantly hindered our after-school availability because after-school programming, many of our families don't have access to transportation, and there's not bus drivers then available after school. But the summer school right now, and Ms. Desmond might even have the number off the top of her head, we serve more students during our summer months than most of the surrounding school districts serve during the fall and spring semesters. We believe we may even have this summer months. We may still be the second-largest school district operation in the Commonwealth next to Boston during the summer months. We've expanded it so significantly. And we also have that investment for after school, but again, it's the bus driver shortage. So those dollars are available and significant work happening there. Again, that's with Ms. Desmond and Carolyn Rocheloe doing incredible work there to expand those opportunities as a key part of our ESR accelerated learning plan.
Thank you, Mr. Ross.
I just wanted to clarify, is the modulators at the STEM already set aside? Is that different?
That's within your ESR plan currently, so that's already budgeted and allocated as part of your ESR funding plan. These are dollars currently that are available largely based on two big bucket items. It could be related to staffing shortages, which then lead to vacancy savings, could be related to, as Ms. Turner said, as grant dollars become available, we've been highly effective, staff have been at acquiring those additional grant dollars, which then free up flexibility and availability within the funds that you budgeted in May. So you have those dollars available. The biggest driver though here is it's the staffing shortages and the vacancy savings that we're still seeing across the country. So we're not alone here in Lowell, while it looks positive because there's dollars available. Those dollars are a result of the fact that we were unable to deliver on certain resources and services that we had prioritized within the budget process, largely due to staffing shortages across the Commonwealth. Some of those positions have now been filled, but we budget 100% of the time, which means if we fill the position in January, the salary cost for September to January, that then becomes available as a vacancy savings and across 2,500 positions. It adds to something that's worthwhile for us to reallocate significantly.
Yes, Ms. Turner?
I just want to follow up and make sure that there's something very clear. As the superintendent did say, we do have money set aside for the STEM modulators. However, just to emphasize this point, that's based upon an estimate, and as the chief operating officer and myself have learned, when we meet with the project manager, the OPM, that that might not, that amount may not be sufficient. So when we say we have money set aside, it's based upon the original estimates. So we still may come back one day and say we need more, or we may have to change the plan. Don't forget, we came forward and said, can we move ahead with an architect, things like that. I only want to emphasize that in case we do have to come back one day and say, oh, by the way, the project's going to cost this, and it may, you may remember, oh, I thought you said we had that set aside. We have set aside the amount that was in the original projection, not, we don't know the overall cost yet until all of the key players are brought in, okay?
Thank you. If I could ask at this point, just from the podium, we are talking about the STEM. Will we get an update, a plan on that for our next meeting? Dr. Boyd?
Dr. Hall?
On the start, the OPM is still studying that and preparing it, and we can give you an update on what he's doing, but it hasn't progressed much further since the last meeting. It's not working.
Your voice kind of faded out on me there, sorry.
Sure. The OPM is still processing the feedback from the last meeting, so there hasn't been much progress since that.
So I guess I just want to remind my colleagues that we have a large school full of students and staff that are severely cramped, and we've made some, I think, miraculous adjustments as we could around the space limitations. This was something that should have been dealt with two years ago. In a month, we had a meeting a month ago on this. I just have a sense of urgency that I believe the people at the STEM do share with us. And if we're looking at being, projecting out 18 months or some other ridiculous timeline, we need to know that as soon as possible so we can figure out what is going to be our midterm move on that. So if you could please, Dr. Hall, have something for us for the next meeting, you know, reach out to the OPM or whatever.
So I could just refresh everyone's memory that at the last time this was addressed, it was authorized that the OPM put out a bid for architectural services. So that architect would then, what we had recommended, be able to give the committee projections on how much, how many classrooms you could get and what type of classrooms within the space for that amount of money. So that's what was authorized to go forward, and the OPM's working on that to get bids from architects to provide that opinion to the committee.
Any other questions or comments regarding this budget update? Hearing none, we will quickly move to the next item, Key Performance Indicators Quarter One Report, 7.4. Dr. Boyd?
Thank you. So again, this is, this report is your Key Performance Indicator Quarter One Report coming to you in January, just given by virtue of the committee's calendar. You can see here, we're charting progress in each area, in some cases, greater progress than others, but progress across the organization, but we still got a long way to go. As we've seen across the country, significant regression in student outcomes across subject areas, across grade levels, and significant changes in student attendance patterns, again, across grade levels and across schools. We're seeing improvements, and we're seeing our, the district as a whole, as well as each school individually, moving into an improved area as we're overcoming those gaps. However, we've got a lot of work yet to do, so we're continuing to make sure that we accelerated every opportunity, hence the mention to move towards the acceleration academies district-wide, which we typically do in selected school locations, moving to make sure that we provide a greater investment there to take advantage of the financial flexibility to serve students now and today going into tomorrow. With that, I provide that report as a report of progress, Madam Chair, but I stand for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson.
Just a quick question. Are the KPIs created locally or federally? And the reason why I ask that is because the second one states a safe and welcoming environment, and I'm curious if the dashboard, which kind of speaks to racism and discrimination and bullying, is that included in that measure?
These are developed locally. So these are the school committees-- So these are the school committee's KPIs based on our five-year strategic plan. So we can add, adjust, modify. So this is a comparison to what was there in the KPIs for quarter one last year, so you can see progress, but we can adjust these and have complete flexibility.
Okay. I would make a motion to have that information from the dashboard included in or reflected in that second bullet about a safe and welcoming environment.
Motion by Mr. Thompson, seconded by Ms. Martin. All those in favor? Any discussion? Yes? Aye. Motion passes. Ms. Martin.
I just had a quick question on the, on operational efficiency, the diversity hiring percentage. So is that, in quarter one, 46% of the people hired were represented, you know, were considered diversity hires? Is that what that percentage means?
Dr. Hall?
Yes, that's correct.
So is there a number? Like how many hires were, like 46% of how many?
I don't have the exact number. I guess it's between 20 to 30, but I'd want to give you the exact number.
I didn't know if we're talking like 100 people, you know, just to kind of get a sense of the scope. Thank you.
Mr. Rossi?
I was just wondering if I could make a motion to have a family and community engagement subcommittee meeting and look at this further in there too? If that's appropriate?
I'd second that.
Okay, so a motion by Ms. Del Rossi to send this report to the family and engagement community subcommittee. Is that the name of it? Seconded by Ms. Martin, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Anything else on 7.4? Hearing none, we move on to 7.5. Response to motion 1012722 by Stacy Thompson and Connie Martin regarding biweekly payroll. I believe you had a report on the status of the biweekly payroll. I don't know if we need any questions or comments about it?
I did. I just want to say thank you. I'm glad that this turned out positively for the staff. I was overjoyed hearing that, to be honest with you. So our voices do matter. Thank you.
Okay, so we're all good with that. Response to motion 912 by Connie Martin regarding overtime payments, 7.6. Ms. Martin, did you have?
You know, thank you very much for pulling this together. I appreciate that. I would say, I know that there was additional requests for information by Ms. Doherty looking for some comparison points over the last couple of years. I don't know how many years you were looking for, two or three of what the, how they compared over time?
I'm not looking to make a huge amount of work, but I think to really get a sense of our overtime costs, we need to be able to compare what we were spending on overtime prior to that. And I don't know that it's enough to just do the pandemic. So I'd be open to Ms. Turner, but I thought the comparison is important.
I would agree.
Because we're transferring, I think, $1 million or we just recently did?
We're just about to.
Right. For overtime. So let's kind of get a grip on what we're spending on overtime and how do you do that without being able to look back? Ms. Turner?
Hi. I just want to clarify, we don't have, it's not $1 million in overtime. We don't have $1 million in overtime and I can say that it has doubled or even tripled in some cases. So I can easily, just so you know, I can definitely do several years on overtime specific accounts such as, so the project that we did with you, which is a 650, it's services, so it includes everything from professional development to like extra, all kinds of stuff.
Right.
But if we're looking specifically at just overtime counts, I can do a historical trend analysis, think, I can actually give you 10 years of data on that so that you can see it and it would be very simple. But just to give you an answer today, we definitely have doubled or tripled in each of those accounts and I believe it's mostly because of COVID, unfilled, staffing shortages. So there's many unfilled positions in custodial. I can give one example right now, even within finance, right? Our deputy CFO, who happens to be well-loved, well, and he was very good at what he did, but he was recruited because there's a staffing shortage. So he was recruited by one of our previous chiefs. And so my point being that we're having a hard time filling that role, right? We're offering great money, we're offering a great title, but there aren't enough qualified people in these situations. So then what happens? You end up having to do overtime for someone else to fill those duties. So I can definitely offer you the, a simple report that will show it and I'll have it on the next report. Or I could actually email it, being that it, you know what I'm saying? Do I wait till the next one or am I allowed to email that?
It's up to you.
Ms. Martin, it was your original motion. I just added, I bet, it was a request made at the December 7th meeting, but I'm open to?
I mean, I think if we can get it for the next meeting, that's fine. And then we can, then at least the information tracks overtime.
Right.
You know, for anyone who's been.
And I don't know if we need 10 years.
I don't think so.
But I would say pre-COVID, a couple of years.
Yeah, like four?
Four, five.
Maybe if that?
Okay. Thank you.
Can I ask too, now this is maybe a crossover. I mean, I know within our union contracts, we have built in these overtime allowances. But I mean, we have a great deal of professional staff who I don't believe would fall into like an overtime situation, do we?
No. The overtime would most likely be just the people that are entitled to it.
Then I'll be covered under union contracts.
Right.
Okay. Okay. That was curiosity. Thank you.
Okay, so we will go right to 7.7. This is a response to my motion regarding math and literacy interventions. Ms. Thompson?
So this is a good report. I think that this needs to go, sorry to make you have more work. She looked at me, she's like, ah. To the curriculum subcommittee. And quite honestly, in addition to that, and again, not to put more work on you, but having met, I am on that subcommittee, so it's fine. But I think that, you know, having met with the advisory committee today, they brought some things that were, that for them were a little unsure as far as what they were getting, as far as some of their curriculum. So I would like to add to the agenda, conversations again about sex education reporting and health curriculum, because they themselves were saying that they were not getting the same curricula in both places. So just to, I think, to lay it to rest, what the curriculum is so we're seeing it. There was positive, you know, commentary about the curriculum too, having the dance and whatnot, but I think that to just kind of lay it to rest. So I would make a motion to send that to this curriculum subcommittee.
Motion by Ms. Thompson, seconded by Ms. Martin. So that would be to send this report on math and literacy interventions to the curriculum subcommittee, a discussion about high school sex education curriculum. And if I could also say, we had, we had a report on sex education that Ms. Desmond did for us that I asked to go to the curriculum subcommittee. We never had that meeting, so could we include that report as well? So that would be three?
Yes. I know that she tried, but I think we had like 10 minutes or something like that. She's trying to speed through the presentation, I'm not gonna say.
So there was the middle school sex education report. Is that not clear to you, Ms. Desmond?
We shall, we'll figure it out. There's, we'll figure it out and respond accordingly.
No, I think if there's any questions, we can happily address them right now, no? I would just ask, I know Ms. Martin is chair of curriculum, if we could all be polled because I would very much like to be able to attend that meeting as well. All right. Thank you. So we are at 7.8. This is response to motion 11 by Ms. Chune regarding legislative agenda. Ms. Chune, did you have any comments, questions?
Yes. Thank you so much for compiling a very detailed response to my motion. My question would be, moving forward, are we going to, how are we going to move forward on this, you know, in the, are we going to approach our legislator to, because we know that the fair sharement passed during the general election and that will help tremendously with our students' education and with our buildings and, again, especially with our students' education. How are we going to move forward on that? Again, this is well put and thank you again for the team for putting it together. And my other question would be is, if we are moving forward and urging our legislator to support this, are we going to ensure that they allocate the funds to our schools, especially in the urban community like the city of Lowell? Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, this would frame our conversations with our local delegation who have been unified and highly supportive. So I'm looking forward to work, continuing to work with them. This is a hot time for them in the month of January, so we'll engage all of our local delegation individually and collectively to move forward the interests of the city of Lowell.
Thank you. Next item, 7.9, monthly incident report. Dr. Boyd?
Thank you. This is the monthly report that is provided as per the motion by Ms. Thompson. Ms. Phillips is available for any questions.
I'm sorry, I'm talking a lot tonight, which I guess is actually par for the course. Thank you for the report, again, fairly thorough. I just have to say, I mean, I guess I'm looking at this and it's concerning, you know, the number of bullying reports or incidents really high. And I was looking at, I think it was page three, and thank you for numbers, because I know you said you were going to put numbers. I noticed that, so I appreciate that. You know, I was looking at October 21 and then 2022, just the, I mean, significant jump in incidents. I mean, three times as much. So I'm just curious, like, you know, it's great that there's a reporting device and I'm wondering how much of that is because there's, you know, more of an accessibility to the reporting device or more knowledge that it exists? But I just don't want the numbers to keep going up and the reports, you know, to keep coming in. But I'm just like, what are, what are we needing to do as a support system, as a school committee to address this, to support you all in your efforts to, you know, one, bring these numbers down and, and get to the root causes? Because when there are these many incidents, there are clearly root causes. So I guess I'm just looking to figure out what we can do to support this, to bring these numbers in a different direction.
Ms. Phillips?
Thank you, school committee member Thompson. So I don't know this for certain, but one thing that, that I am thinking about is the aftermath of COVID and how that impacted our reporting in the prior year versus now. I do believe we have some reports from even years before that we could compare to really see. Well, we'd have to go back to 2018, 19 to see what the levels were then. So that's a tough comparison between October of last year and October of this year. One thing I do want to mention is we are really pushing for awareness of this reporting protocol. And the more we push, the more we'll see reports. So I do anticipate that more reports will come and the question is how are we, how are we going to be proactive in addressing it? But I don't want to look at it with, we should be alarmed, but we also should recognize the effort being taken to understand what's happening in schools. And so, and I've also shared this across our schools with school leaders. I am aware that as relates to racism, there are different communication efforts and sometimes that communication effort makes all the difference in what's coming in. And I think it's important initially to acknowledge that when we're pushing for information out there, the reporting out there, you are going to get increases. And that's some schools saying, I'm not going to try to, you know, I'm not trying to, I'm not going to try to keep my numbers low to look better than what I am. I'm trying to understand what's really happening in my school to address it. So that's really the way that I'm trying to approach it right now in a proactive way of let's, let's hear and learn what's happening and then as we're learning what's happening, let's take steps to address it. So that's something that, that our community committee will continue to meet and advise us on and address. But I, I just wanted to share that, you know, I really want to understand what's happening in schools and part of that is the messaging to schools to not hold back on what's happening. Let's hear what's happening, let's solve it together. And then I guess the question would be, at what point have we pushed the communication, analyzed the results and not seen improvements? Right? So I think that's a discussion on how much time is time to make those adjustments versus, you know, kind of preemptively saying, you know, why does a school have so many? Well, it's because the school has really taken an effort. So, but it's ongoing work and definitely welcome your voice and your experience in this area. And again, we'll continue to pull in our community group.
I appreciate that. I think that last time I had mentioned a concern for finding out if a lot of these incidents are happening in one school, if it's a specific envir- excuse me, envirion issue as opposed to more of a widespread? Because I do think that if you have one area that you need to hone in on, it makes it a lot less difficult. You know what I'm saying? So to be able to find that and know how you, when you gain the information, if you have that knowledge, if it's coming from one particular school and you can dial down to that, not that that needs to be broadcast, but I'm just saying, if you can dial into that, then that would be helpful, I think, to, to, you know, share with us so that we can, you know, continue to make inroads all together. Thank you.
Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much. Just another angle to take, because I do think, I mean, this is, it's difficult information to kind of quantify, you know, that are we moving in the right direction and we, you know? So I think that that is a very real challenge and I think to your point, wanting to have the unvarnished facts, I mean, that's the very first step. So we're even, we're not even quite there yet. So there's a ways to go. But I'm wondering, I mean, there are a lot of ways to kind of measure outcomes and impacts. Would we have the opportunity, I mean, these, every one of these incidents has a person involved, usually two. But is there an opportunity, once you've gone through, you know, you're conducting these investigations, you're, you know, you're digging into the situations, is there a way even to get a kind of end result from the actual people involved of, were they satisfied with the investigation? Did they feel that it was fair? Did they feel that it was managed appropriately? Because that, I mean, in those, you can obviously phrase those better than I did, but, you know, the idea being that for someone who's gone through something like this, it could be a real valuable measure to be able to say, of people who had these difficult experiences, 90% of them felt that the administration responded effectively and that things were better. You know, it's not a, again, as you know, I'm a big fan of hardcore numbers, but this is something that I think could still have value and I think would very clearly reflect the, the kind of individual's experience with the policy and with the efforts that are being made. So that could give us something else to measure that's not necessarily just this happened and this happened and this happened. What was the result and how did the people involved feel about it? Right. Thank you. That's it.
Did anyone else have any other comments? Okay, hearing none, we'll move forward to the monthly enrollment report, 17.
Thank you. The next two are standard reports for the committee, the enrollment report and the personnel report. They're submitted as reports of progress, but staff is available for any questions.
Any questions on those last two reports from anyone? Hearing none, I need a motion to accept the reports of the superintendent, 7.1 through 7.11, as reports of progress by Ms. Chune, seconded by Ms. Del Rossi. All in favor? Aye, approved. Aye, approved. Okay. We now go to new business. Budget transfer. I need a motion to approve the budget transfer. Actually, is there any questions or comments about the budget transfer request before we go to the motion? No? So I need a motion to approve the budget transfer of, well, that's a really big number, $3,126,676.67 by, who's making that motion? Ms. Thompson? Seconded by Ms. Delay? Any questions? Roll call?
Ms. Delay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chune?
Yes.
Six sheyes.
Did we skip one? Just the personnel?
Okay. 8.2, Approval to Accept and Expend Allocated FY23 Awards. Any comments or questions regarding that? Need a motion to approve, accept, and expend allocated FY23 funds. By Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Delay. Roll call?
Ms. Delay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chune?
Yes.
Ms. Del Rossi?
Yes.
Six sheyes, approved.
Now we have a bunch of conference and convention requests. 9.1, 9.2, 9.3. And I believe, Dr. Boyd, you have a conference as well at 10.1. Doesn't that belong with the other conference requests?
Mine's already approved as part of my contract with the school committee.
So that's why we don't need to vote on that? That's why it's under Communications?
Not typically, having in any other prior year. You've already voted on that as part of the contract.
Okay. Thank you. All right. So I need a motion to bundle and approve the convention conference requests, 9.1 to 9.3. By Ms. Del Rossi, seconded by Ms. Thompson. Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Ms. Delay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chune?
Yes.
Ms. Del Rossi?
Yes.
Six sheyes, approved.
And motion, item 11.1, The Members of the United Teachers of Lowell Hereby Donate 16 Sickly Days to Devon Mello Lincoln School Teacher. I need...
Wait, wait. Didn't you skip one?
I did not skip one. I had just the communications, which doesn't require a vote.
Yeah, but you need to accept it and place it on...
Oh, I'm sorry. I did skip communications. 10.1, Communication Regarding the American Association of School Administrators National Conference on Education to Be Held in San Antonio, Texas. Motion to accept the communication and place on file by Ms. Thompson, seconded by Ms. Delay. All those in favor, say aye. Motion passes. 11.1, The Members of the United Teachers of Lowell Hereby Donate 16 Sickly Days to Devon Mello Lincoln School Teacher. Need a motion to approve by Ms. Delay, seconded by Ms. Thompson. Roll call.
Ms. Delay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chune?
Yes.
Ms. Del Rossi?
Yes.
Six sheyes, approved.
Motion to adjourn by Ms. Thompson, seconded by Ms. Del Rossi. If you're all in favor, aye. So ends our first meeting of 2023. Thank you all.